... Community High School District Two Ten, the Board of Education to order an update on the five-year capital improvement plan and the five-cast projection. While police standards are able for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Latt, here is Janet Doyle, Mr. Luchetti.
Here.
Mr. Lulo.
Here.
Mr. Janik.
Here.
Mr. Kostic.
Here.
Mr. Kirky.
Here. Before we move on to public comments, the Board of Education has asked Dr. Tingley to address the Board of Education on the recent topic of the PMA documents. Dr. Tingley, would you please address the board?
Yes, as we begin tonight, I'd like to take a few moments to clarify the timeline and events and address some of the recent formal questions. The timeline, Dr. Wiley announced his retirement the winter of 2012. Retirement began in June of 2013. At that point, I was formally named superintendent for the 2013-2014 school year. To clarify some statements that have been made in public comment, I did not have access to the full financial records of the district at the time of my hiring. There were no secret meetings where Dr. Wiley instructed me the ways of handling finance. I was hired by the Board of Education, not by Dr. Wiley. When I began as superintendent in July of 2013, the financial and business operations of the district were not in question. My background was the operation of school districts. I was hired to build upon the tradition of academic success of our schools. In the short time of my hiring, I began to see inconsistencies in the accounting and reporting practices of the district. Deficits of a few million dollars had been publicly reported over previous years. The initial plan was to reduce expenditures to reduce the deficits. In December of 2013, the board in public session authorized the TAWs of 11 million for short-term borrowing. It has been suggested in public comment and in the press that I intentionally withheld information from the board or the public about the final condition of the district. That is simply not true. On January 9th, 2014, I sent a memo to the board outlining revenues and expenditures during my first four months of superintendent. I expressed concern regarding the potential of declining revenue increasing and increasing needs for TAWs. I saw the need to have an outside perspective on our financial situation. The memo stated, while I am comfortable with my projections, I believe it is beneficial to obtain independent analysis. On January 13th, 2014, I followed up with another memo that outlined some of the projected deficits and my personal concerns for the district. The memos of January 9th and January 13th were referenced in subsequent minutes of board meetings and discussed publicly. Those minutes were publicly posted. They show that the discussion of the content of those memos took place at those board meetings. Those memos from January 9th and January 13th, 2014 will be available in board docs and in libraries. To be clear, I was the one who asked for the help of PMA to get an outside eye on the district finances. I felt that PMA was a well-respected firm and they could either confirm my own concerns or at least provide a more accurate view of our financial situation. The PMA provided us with a projection. The board was provided a copy of the analysis and projection. The PMA information was contrary to what they had been led to believe in the past. There were individuals who were not competent in the PMA numbers provided. It was decided that the document would not be presented at a public meeting. This was not my recommendation. Instead, it was then used as a planning document in negotiations with the teachers and to determine staffing for the upcoming years. The use of this document allowed for the exemption under voiding. This past week, the Attorney General advised of the release of the document as it is no longer being used for the purpose of negotiations, and the district has released the document. Back then, it was my hope, and I believe the hope of the board at the time, that we could work our way out of the financial crisis by making some substantial reductions in personnel and in programs without significantly impacting the academic programs for our students. In the January planning session, potential reductions were presented to the board. It was during the next several months that the district and the board faced opposition to eliminating or reducing junior ROTC, several elective teaching positions, public access to swimming pools, and other supervisory and staff position reductions. In the end, the board decided not to eliminate junior ROTC but to combine them and found that none of our reductions would prove to be enough to keep us from falling even further into debt and deficit spending. We could not cut or fundraise our way out of many years of the deficit spending that we had inherited. The finances of the district were discussed regularly at open meetings. It was stated that many bills had gone unpaid the previous year. The holding of bills led to increased expenses for fiscal year 2014. It was determined that we would no longer continue the practice of paying our vendors late. Due to those corrections, the district closed FY14 with a deficit of nearly $8 million. This was published publicly. Shortly after, the district did pass a balanced budget. The 14-15 budget, the first created in my superintendency, was constructed in the same manner as it had been over the previous decade. That was a mistake. We now know that the district's business operations were not up to standard. Presenting a balanced budget in June of 2014 was a result of my own inexperience in working with the business manager at the time. I own that decision, and in the next year and all subsequent years, we have reworked the way budgets were designed and presented. The budgets for the past three years have been more detailed and accurate. During the fall of 2015, the board approved the hiring of an interim business manager. This was the first time, to my recollection, that the district began to utilize the budget as a true financial tool that compared actual expenditures to revenues in the budget. In the summer of 2015, a Director of Finance was hired to improve upon accounting practices and internal controls. This year, we have two experienced individuals leading the financial operations of the district. It has been a difficult time for the entire Lincolnway community, but what we have accomplished in the face of these hardships has been moving. Our academic and athletic success are at their highest levels, and our students' graduation rate, 97%, is as high as the district has seen. Our students' graduates move into the top colleges in the country, and a large percentage of our students live with college credit already earned through our AP programs and other my opportunities. Much credit goes to our faculty, who continue to do an incredible job with a very limited budget for supplies, technology, and instructional materials. The district's finances are also on the road of recovery, even faster than we had hoped to predict. Last year, we closed our 2016-17 year with an operating surplus of $3.3 million, the first operating surplus in the past 12 years. Because of our dependency on borrowing and our tax anticipation warrants, we have much work still to do, but our direction is clear, and we see a positive outcome in a few years. As you will see tonight, the district's financial forecast looks solid moving forward. We have a new auditor, an experienced Director of Finance, and an Assistant Superintendent, CSPO, who will continue to make adjustments to our reporting practices and to guide us towards a healthier financial future. Thank you.
Questions for the board at this time for the board? We'll move to the public comment section. The first person who went on.
No questions.
No questions. Questions for the members. Representative.
I'm going to try to make this short and sweet. I'm here tonight to address the Board of Education and the Board of Education only. I have nothing to say to Mr. Tingley. I know that asking for his resignation is a waste of time. He will never voluntarily resign, and that is why I'm asking this board to remove him from this position. Do it however you want, but do it. I know a lot of your campaign promises were to make changes. Well, the first thing on your agenda should have been to remove him. We need significant change in this district now. He's like a runaway train, and only you can stop him. I don't know why you continue to let him run this district further into the red. Clearly, he is not qualified for this position. We can't continue spending and borrowing millions and millions of dollars. It's so out of control, and you all continue to let him mismanage our money. So I ask this board to please remove him. It is in the best interest of the students and taxpayers of this community. This is why you were all elected, to do what is best. Thank you.
Good evening. You have all received the recent Lincolnway A newsletter, and in its section called Table Talk, let me read from you from that section now. October's asset of the month is positive values, integrity, and honesty. Youth need to develop strong values that guide their choices. Throughout the month, asset coordinators will focus their discussions with students on practicing integrity and honesty through everyday life, and specifically through their social media use. Because learning happens everywhere, you can also foster this asset outside of school. Integrity is telling myself the truth, and honesty is telling the truth to other people subjectively. Potential questions asked for teams. What do integrity and honesty mean to you? What are some factors that affect your ability to be honest with yourself or your ability to be honest with others? What can you do if you know someone isn't being honest with you? What is the most appropriate and effective response? How can you make sure what you share or post online is an honest representation of your values? While I applaud the district for wanting our children to possess qualities of honesty and integrity, I have to take a step back and think to myself, this district really needs to practice what it preaches. Here are some words to live by. Benjamin Franklin thinks that honesty is the best policy. You may wonder where I am headed with this. It is my hope that this newly seated Board of Education will honor their campaign promises of open communication, transparency, and working for the taxpayers, not the superintendents. Everyone is quick to deflect our current financial woes by saying, it was Dr. Wiley. He orchestrated this mess. He drove us to the edge. Well, he will get you stayed in court. I am hopeful that the judge will use his fraudulent mismanagement as an example for others who think they have, can, or will steal from the taxpayers and the students. However, while Dr. Wiley may have taken us to the edge, Dr. Tingley has driven us off the cliff. He took over as superintendent in 2013, and he had the opportunity to come clean with his knowledge of the financial mess and be honest with the community instead of knowingly and purposefully withholding the truth, delaying, or outright denying all your requests, embellishing enrollment numbers to fit his narrative, and most importantly, not divulging the staggering deficit that district faced. The part that infuriated me the most about Dr. Tingley is that he went on record saying, I walked into a difficult situation. The finances of the district were unfortunate. Wait, unfortunate? Sorry, Dr. Tingley, maybe they were unfortunate in 2013, but now they are frankly disastrous, and you, Dr. Tingley, will own that. During the most recent campaign season for the open board seat, our new board president, Joe Kirky, was quoted as saying, it goes beyond transparency. It's not just about giving out the information, but understanding it, discussing it, and having accountability. That will get us back to where we need to be. He also stated, we need to rebuild our reputation, and after all, all I can deal with is what we have presently in front of us. While President Kirky, in closing, I, as a 25-year taxpayer into this district, ask that you please start the search for a new superintendent that our children and our community can trust. John Lennon was quoted as saying, being honest may not win you many friends, but it will always get you the right ones. Thank you.
Thanks for letting me address you tonight. Last night at Lincolnway East, a number of exceptional students, my own two sons included, were deducted into the National Honor Society, an organization rooted in the principles of leadership, integrity, and character. And as I watched those students proudly walk across the stage and shake the hand of Dr. Tingley, the irony of that moment was not lost on me. How can these kids be expected to follow the example of a leader whose tenure as superintendent of Lincolnway has been built on a culture of deception? My tax dollars helped pay for the PMA analysis in 2014. Doesn't the fact that the study was paid for by public tax funds entitle us to the results of the study? Why wasn't held back? What did Dr. Tingley not want us to know? As we now know, due to the command of the Attorney General, that report held the true picture of the impending doom that Lincolnway was headed for, held secret then for another year, conveniently tucked away until after the 2015 school board election, then dropped like a bomb on the unsuspecting public who couldn't even take a breath before a $100 million school was killed before our very eyes. Tell me, why should that be acceptable to us? And why is the withholding of the PMA report acceptable to any of you as board members? Or how about Dr. Tingley's presentation of balanced budgets publicly, followed by multimillion-dollar deficits privately? Is that okay with you? It must be okay with Mrs. Latt, since she willingly and knowingly helped bury that fact. Does anybody else seated at this table understand the gravity of this Dr. Tingley intentionally deceived the citizens of Lincolnway, the people who paid his salary? Why? No more games. We are all adults in this room, and until we know the real truth, we will all only continue to speculate the why. Mr. Kirky, this is a quote from you from our pre-election campaign questionnaire. Quote, "I would seek to create an environment of awareness. Awareness includes the sharing of information in transparency, the understanding of the information, a dialogue regarding the information, and seeking feedback." End quote. Mr. Kirky, as board president, does this not apply to our superintendent? How about your running mates, Mr. Kostic, Mr. Janik, or the rest of you? Do you believe that transparency applies to our superintendent? Because for each and every one of you board members, your action or inaction on this matter from this moment forward will have a direct reflection on your credibility as board members.
Yes, it will.
I'm hoping that everything I've said here doesn't go in one ear and right out the other like normal. But please know this, believe it or not, I do want what's best for Lincolnway. A movement for healing from the self-inflicted catastrophe that this district has had to endure, but I simply refuse to believe that it can ever be really achieved under the direction of untrustworthy leadership. And if you board members actually take your elected role seriously, neither will you. Thank you.
Should have the ten-year capital projects conceptual draft report out. We have been working with architects and some other individuals to help us with budgetary estimates for the work that's proposed. The work that's proposed for FY19 is the work that is explained in the capital projects plan update memo. I don't know if anybody has specific questions or would like me to explain further any of the projects that were proposed for FY19.
I have a question for you. You have in your memo here that the ten-year life safety survey was completed?
Survey was completed. The items that were identified on the survey are the items that we will be addressing in the plan.
And then in 2018 and 2019 for Central, East, we still have expenditures for a ten-year life safety survey?
I could probably relabel that. That ten-year life safety survey on the plan is the repairs that were identified during the survey. So it's actually repairs to the mechanical, electrical, plumbing systems by prevention. So that's the need for recommendation from the life safety survey. Yes.
So then those other repairs that are listed below the ten-year life safety survey are additional repairs that we're looking to plan for?
Correct.
Are outside of the survey?
Outside of the life safety survey, yes.
Was there some methodology to how you prioritize the different things that need to be fixed? In your cover memo, you mentioned that the East tennis courts are not in good shape and they're somewhat a risk of danger to the people using them, but they're not fixing the tennis courts until 2019. At East, right?
Yes. The East tennis courts and the North courts. That would be next summer.
That's next summer.
That would be next summer. Fiscal year 19. Fiscal year 19.
Oh, okay. Gotcha.
So, on this, at a higher level here on this, conceptually, I think this is definitely the way we have to go. I mean, we have to get to a sustainable budget over the long term. I think this shows having about 3% of capital allocated to capital projects, I agree with all that. My concern here is getting too aggressive in 2019 into 2020. And here's my rationale. So we have the $5 million that we started with prior to this year in restricted cash in the capital projects fund. Initially, when we were talking about that, we were talking about that covered in the capital projects that we were going to do for a three- to four-year period. How this is laid out, and this doesn't quite match up with my idea, but it's fairly, that's still a little bit more aggressive than that would be. This basically spends down that $5 million within the first two years. My concern is we are still, we are on the path to recovery, we still have very little margin for safety. For example, if something like the boiler came up or the generator at East again came up and had to be replaced in 2019, I'm not convinced that the state has a sustainable budget yet. So I think that, you know, we should, this is definitely the path we have to get to. I just think it's a little too aggressive on the front end. That's, that would be my opinion there. And I think, you know, with the state budget being a wild card, I'd rather have a little bit of capital still left over after 2019 in that capital projects plan and have it kind of roll out a little bit more.
I think the way that Rich and Brad and I have kind of constructed this, that's a very good, very good thought, and as we go through and we bid and get the prices, that's when there'll be that determination of how that may fit. But that is a very big challenge to continue.
Wouldn't we be updating this though every year going forward? So that we can...
Brad, go ahead. How often are we going to be working on this?
This document is a very dynamic document. It will be, there will be changes made continually based on conditions and needs.
So, yes, so every time we bring back the five-cast, the five-year financial forecast for updating the board, we will be including this document with it. So next time we're back, we'll be back in February, that will be the time when we're just finished engineering and deciding what projects will be done for the summer. We'll go over that when we go over the five-year financial forecast, affirm up where we're at. That then leads us right into the fiscal year 19.
You'll see, well, you'll see in the, when we go over, not to skip ahead, but when you go over the financial forecast, you'll see the big jump of over 10% in O and M, when you have to switch from the funds that are in the capital projects to actually being from the general.
I think I've got a good guess, just because it's not done until it's done. Does the sales department impact your thoughts on how a surplus is...
No, I definitely think that, that obviously helps, but you're still, you're still in the phase where you're going to, you know. That takes, that might take your, I mean, right now, what we have in place, we have your cash balance that we could get up to possibly $7 million when you include the surplus this year and the land sales. So, yeah, that definitely brings it further along, but I still, I still don't think you should be spending down $3.5 million this fiscal year.
Is your recommendation then for, obviously you said that you would go back, but is there anything in particular?
Can you speak up, please?
Is there anything in particular you're questioning?
I'm not, I'm not questioning any of these things. Before 2018, we were doing no capital projects. We did a million and a half in 2018. I just think it's a big jump to go to $3.5 million. So, I mean, I'm not going to be the one who should be prioritizing these things. I'm just talking from a planning standpoint and an overall, you know, margin of safety standpoint with our balances.
Look, I think I just want to point out that if that, again, it's not done until it's done, sales go through, then that would give you...
We can't hear you.
If that goes through, and that sale would give you about four-plus million dollars of additional funds to place into the capital improvement plan. Because to your point, deferring it further may cost more in the future, things like roofs and stuff like that. I just wanted to be careful that we don't become penny wise and pound fool.
I agree, and I, I mean, the case can be made for that, but I mean, looking at those roofing things, some of these roofs are from 1950s or 60s. So, I mean, we have, we have the architect looking at them. I agree, if there's water or something, you know, I totally agree, but I'm just saying, if there's, my personal feeling is that you'd be a little more conservative. I totally agree that, you know, in getting up to this 3%, I mean, we, maybe I only went to, you know, I went to an IASB thing for planning on capital projects that that last November, and they were suggesting 3% would be at the low end of what they're recommending. We were doing nothing. I'm fully on board with this. I'm just saying, I'm just, I'm just questioning the scheme of it.
Rich, though, if we're in the middle of a project and God forbid it's a boiler, it's a generator, and something happens, as long as we haven't started or isn't life critical, we could put that project on hold and utilize that money with foration on the problem of the day, if you will, correct?
What do you mean by in the middle of a project?
I guess what I'm saying is if we bid on something, but we haven't started yet, we're not committed to...
If we go out to bid, that does not mean we have to accept the bid in the form of...
So that money could be utilized as something...
But if, but if there are items that we know we don't want to do, we probably shouldn't waste money in the design phase and the bidding phase, because that's also, that also costs.
I mean, this is off, I mean, this is off, this, I mean, this is off for the summer. I mean, these would mostly be done, correct, over the summer. So, I mean, I think there's, there's time to still work on these things. I think definitely the mission critical things, like, you know, we've looked at, we have the roofing survey done, they definitely prioritize them. I think you're, I mean, you're moving forward on those things. I mean, I don't, I don't know, you know, I don't want to get into the prioritization of some of these things, but, you know, if it came to it, you know, another year at the North tennis courts.
But we have to talk about the safety of the kids, too, and the safety of the people around the tennis courts.
Right now, we're busing the teams to North, so they're utilizing the North tennis courts.
I'm just saying, you have to think of the safety.
Yeah, so I agree with it, you know, that's something that could potentially...
Yeah, we can come, we will, we will definitely work with this as we move into the bidding process. We will bring a responsible bidder policy first reading to the board in October, and so the plan is to start the bidding process early in the new year. So, we'll work on this a little bit as we continue to move.
I just had a question regarding the, I'm sorry. I just had a question regarding the principal request, programming-based improvements, and I write the cover sheet as examples of what those entail. Where, what, what methods were used to derive those numbers? I see over the 10 years, it's about 2.4 million for the three, for the three campuses.
Right now, we're in the infancy stages of a capital plan, really. Those numbers really came from what we could fit into the budget. We did try and get to that $3 million, that 2%. And if we could give those principals, the stakeholders in the buildings, some input on what they feel is important. We thought that 50,000 to me is a low number, but it's a start for those. And, and some of those, some of those projects might fall into line with some of the other projects we're doing. So, really, it was just a, a way to get a number in there to give the principals a starting point.
Any other questions? Next on our agenda is the five-year financial projections.
Good evening. I'm pleased to be here tonight to present the updated five-year financial forecast. As an updated as of May, it's a critical point for us to update as we finish our prior fiscal year end. And we begin the production process as we begin to prepare for our upcoming year. Tonight's presentation is meant to be an interactive discussion, so please, if you have questions as we're going, stop me, we'll answer them as we're going through the document. The five-year financial forecast, or what we refer to as Five Cast for short, is a comprehensive interacting planning tool which the district uses for budget development, tax levy determination, and for general future planning. This interactive tool is based on hundreds of assumptions that affect the model's output. As you know, the longer the planning horizon, the less certain the results will be as events that affect the district's financials change over time. The interactive planning tool can be used to develop what-if scenarios or changing assumptions. We'll be looking at one base scenario tonight, but could offer and develop others in the future. What the Five Cast is not, it is not a static document that will remain unchanged in the future. In fact, the Five Cast model needs to be ever-evolving model, or it will become worthless in guiding the district's future financials. The five, the five-year financial projections are developed based on the elements listed on the slide and are provided to, provided by the district, the PMA, to be locate, loaded into the five-year financial software. Please note that the charts and graphs that we'll focus on tonight are for operations only unless stated that include all funds. The Five, the Five Cast has two major calculators that use historical data and current input assumptions to calculate 93, 73% of all revenue and 74% of all expenditures. The remaining revenue and expenditures are adjusted or modeled by manual input based on appropriate assumptions. For example, student fees. Student fees were adjusted in the model based on estimated enrollment and approved fees as set by the Board of Education. This is the district's total operating revenue for fiscal year 18 of the original budget you just adopted, and is graphically displayed here on the screen. As you can see from this graph, the district is very dependent on local property taxes, 73%. The district is projected to become more dependent in the future. The district's current original budget is a key building block for the forecast and is assumed to be accurately reflected district operations. The district levies two types of taxes. Operating tax, which is taxed capped by PTEL, the Property Tax Extension Limit Law, and the debt service levy, which is not taxed capped. PTEL limits the increase of our operating tax levy to the lesser of 5% or the Consumer Price Index as of the prior December, and the tax on new property or new growth tax. For example, the 2017 tax levy, which we just filed with the county, was based on the Consumer Price Index of 2016, which was 2.1%. Debt service levy is set by bond referendum and is automatically levied unless abated by the Board of Education. The change in the CPI is the single largest revenue assumption within the Five Cast model, since it regulates or controls an estimated 73% of the district's rev, operating revenue. Here on this graph, so the green bars represent the actual CPI, and the hash marks are where the Wall Street Journal had predicted up to two years in advance where the CPI would be. For fiscal year 2018, the district will rely on 50%, about 50% of the 2006 tax levy, 16 tax levy, which was set in December, and 50% of the 2017 tax levy, which was just filed and will be finalized in December, which had a CPI of 2.1. You can see here for, we have to project out into the future. So for the first two years, tax levy that we're projecting, we're using the Wall Street Journal forecast, which you may see the history of the forecast has been pretty good. And then going out for the next three years, we're just using a historical average. As, as noted on the slide, or I'm sorry, as, as a special note, as of August 31st, 2017, the year-over-year change in the CPI was 1.9. This is down from the February 2017 high of 2.7.
I think it's important to note, because I think that this model is very sensitive, as you said, to the CPI. And just when we were doing this in May, which I'm sure it's what the Wall Street Journal had, I think we were using 2018 CPI of 2.4. It's now at 1.74% in this projection. So, I mean, and I think the sensitivity to CPI is every 1% is like $650,000, $660,000. That's, I mean, that's right, but to, I mean, to look at that, I think we just have to keep that in context. From May till now, the estimate went from 2.4 to 1.74. Makes sense because through August, CPI is up about 1%. It's going to be adventurous to get to 1.74% in the last four months, but that has a big impact. So these, these 2% out in 19, 20, 21, when you see those surpluses, and those, as you can see, we've only had one year of inflation over 2% since 2012.
It would also compound.
Yes.
Once you create surplus, then anticipate the next year. And as you indicated when you started this, that obviously this, you have to take a point to run a what-if scenario. But I would concur on, if anything happened, I'm looking at a more updated thing as well, that the, the par, the inflation paradigm could be shifting right under our feet, and what we think is going to happen, why not? I've been tripping that there's another economic downturn coming. It's just a question now of if, but when. And I would hope that we would then present to us maybe, if this is the expected, maybe a less-than-expected as we go forward. Because I agree, and when I, when I run it to 650, it compounds as you go further.
Right, no, absolutely. And, and I'm not questioning, I mean, you have to start somewhere. I'm not questioning, I'm not questioning inputs using Wall Street Journal as, you know, as good as any of them. I, I do think, I would, I would have thought the 10-year CPI number would be less than 2%, but...
Yeah, that's more, it's more like the 15-year, so we can look at the more closer, because the closer it's going to make a little over. But it's, you know, it's, you're right, but I mean, the Wall Street Journal historically has been in the ballpark, so we continue to adjust it, you know, every time we got a new piece of data out, so...
I was just pointing out that we have to be, the sensitivity to it is, you have to think of, if, if it doesn't come in at two, it comes in at one, that's 660,000 less in revenue. For that year, compounded.
For that year, yeah.
Yes, especially if it's in one of these early years, it gets compounded over all those years.
The second key factor in predicting revenue for the district is the new growth in property values. For 2016 tax levy, which was finalized, the district had 62.6 million of new growth, which generated an additional one, just over $1 million in new tax revenue. Within the model, we're predicting the tax new top, new property growth to flatten in the future. That's these blueish, or, well, orange, sorry, orange lines. Since it's very difficult to predict this, since, literally, since this was produced last week, we've now received our early estimate from Will County indicating that they looked like the 2017 tax new growth. Here, we're projecting 68 million. We've got, just up this week, yesterday, we got estimates that it looks like it could be 51 million. So going through our sensitivity analysis, saying, what does this mean already? Well, that's a 17 million change in new growth. And for each million of new growth, we get about 17,000. So that's 289,000 less in revenue than we were projecting. What does this mean? This means since it's split roughly 50/50 between fiscal year 18 and fiscal year 19, that will mean 145,000 less for fiscal year 18 and 145,000 less for fiscal 19. So, just how that's affecting the model. That will be updated with our next update.
So the next time we do this, should we be changing our out-years new EAV growth?
Oh, right. We're going to be, this just got sent to us from the counties, so we'll be with the county, and, right, we'll be looking at those and adjusting.
Because it makes it look like 2016 is the outlier, right? It looks like, you know, if you would have continued on, 2016 kind of is the outlier higher than where you were kind of pacing it at.
Correct.
No, I'm just looking at like, looking at the top of the chart from 2000...
Oh, okay.
Sorry, 2011 to where now 2017 is, looks like the outlier above was 2016.
Brad, I would just really encourage us all to do this. I know we all want to believe that we're back to, you know, just northeast growth that we use a 10-year average. We, it's like, it still exists.
Right.
That was the first thing I sort of wanted to got into, that this, there was maybe some buy-in on projections in the past that created some of the challenges.
Can you use the microphone, please?
It is some of the challenges in the past that we brought into projections that create some of the things we have now. And so, this to me screamed a bit, if you didn't learn from what you've done before, this, let's do the same thing, same thing with CPI. If we hit another recessionary type scenario, inflation isn't going to follow in the recession. So, right, CPI will die, EAV will die, and we just had the 10-year capital budget projection, kind of assuming that things would continue to northeast, so just caution.
I'm a proponent, and I talked about this last month, I think we were going over or something, of having a base case, an optimistic case, and a pessimistic case. And that's kind of what you, I think you have to do in these types of things, to kind of, one, it gives you, it gives you kind of a clue on the sensitivity, changing some of these inputs, if you have different, different cases to kind of look at. And then, it also helps when you're, you know, if, if something was to come up, you know, if this 51 million would have come up at the next meeting after we'd already gone over this, we kind of could have already adjusted as something that we already had.
Right.
Okay, well, we'll, going forward, so at our February meeting, well, that meeting will have our final CPI, but we will then have a best, you know, worst case, well, medium case, I guess, best case, and then optimistic. We'll have three outputs. All right, so I researched our tax records back to 2005, determined what our high point was. At that point, we hit four, just over $4 billion. So 2000, I'm sorry, 2008 was our high point on our EAV at 4.08 billion. As you can see here, based on that new growth numbers and reassessments of 2.5, which has been historical, we're looking to have our EAV grow by 2019 back to that point we were at back in 2008.
I have a question. Can I, I mean, not be the first in finance with Chris and Joe, but if all the other slides that we've seen are a little bit too aggressive, wouldn't this slide then be too aggressive as well?
The two factors affecting this slide is reassessment of current properties, which is on a three-year rolling average. And if you look back, that's been 2.5, 2.49. So that's, that's a, the single biggest factor. The second factor would be new growth. So if our new growth is 10 million less, I mean, we're, we are talking about $4 billion. So the new growth is going to affect a small amount, but not as much. But this, this, what this does, this drives the health of the entire district. $4 billion in tax base is a very healthy tax base. So that's a positive thing for the district. But you're right, we'll readjust these two. Okay, so based on the two largest factors we just talked about, the CPI and the new property growth, the district, district is expecting its aggregate tax levy, including debt service, to increase to about 100 million by, over 100 million by 2022.
Move back.
Yep.
So that slope, the big up slope there between 2018 and 2019, that's the interest, bond interest.
Right.
So that's, that's what's being reflected.
And you're going to see that right here on this slide too. So what you're talking about here is we're having additional debt service payments come online, but they're not, the way the debt service works is you actually tax in advance of the payment, and so even though the payments aren't being made till '20, we have to start taxing for them in '19. But absolutely, that's the slope up. So it's, you see it in the bars there, but you really see it in the line right there.
And just to put it on the radar, your, the 20, that's the 2019 tax levy?
Correct.
What is the, the date that that will be done? And when can it be revised until?
Okay, so the 2019 tax levy has to be filed by the last Tuesday of December of 2019. It can be amended until March 31st of 2020, in the year in which it's collected. All right, as we already said here, with those projected increasing EAV and new growth, the district is projecting its tax, operating tax levy, tax rate, excuse me, tax rate... the district is projecting its tax, operating tax levy, tax rate, excuse me, tax rate to remain relatively flat. But we, as you can see with these darker orange bars, we're anticipating increasing tax levy or tax rate due to the onset of some additional debt service payments. As far as state and federal revenue, the state has yet to announce the full implementation plan of the new legislation titled Evidence-Based Funding. So at this point, the best estimate we have is what the state has notified us, which will be our hold harmless guarantee funding for fiscal year 17, and that's what's been used in the model. All other assumptions are based on the current allocations that we're receiving. Whoops. Sorry, got out of order. Now let me talk about this slide. Sorry, I got out of order. So the second big one for us is our corporate personal property tax, which is being estimated from the Department of Revenue, and is estimated to go down about 500, or estimated to be 512,000, or about 10% decline. The other local revenues projected based on the 18 budget levels. And what I just said about state funding, sorry, that's what it is right there on the slide.
So did you? Going back.
Yeah.
When we were doing the, we did this last time, we were using the old formula, correct?
For, in the FY18 budget, since we had already put it on display and everything, and not knowing exactly what it's going to mean, in the FY18 budget, as the old formula, they forecast, which are the numbers you're looking at tonight, FY19, has the evidence-based funding based on the FY17 hold harmless. So that's the minimum funding we're supposed to get from the state. The only wild card is if they pay. They seem to be being very prompt at the moment. That answer it?
Yeah, I was, I would, that's fine. I was getting at the version we saw in May, the five-year forecast. You're using the old formula.
That's right, in May.
It's done, that increased revenue in these projections by about 2 million.
Yeah, and that's in the, so provided in your packets, a reconciliation you'll see. Yeah, so to be, to, you know, so to, the reconciliation in the package, reconciling from the FY18 budget. Now, if you go back to the May five-year financial, at that point, we were projecting substantial declining state aid because of the way the formula was working, and we were slowly sliding from a flat, or formula foundation to an altered formula at this point. Okay, so that's state revenue. Okay, so this is a graph of the operating funds revenue by major revenue source. Based on all the aforementioned assumptions, the district expects tax revenue to grow to about 89% of its total budget by 2023. The total estimated operating revenues in this projection are expected to be about 101 million by 2023.
What is it now?
Uh, right now, we're just about 86 million.
I'm sorry, the percentage, it's?
Oh, 73 for operating. Now, while we'll develop going forward, we'll always bring forward three models, as previously here discussed. However, the number of models that you could produce could be literally thousands. And so one thing that can help us to answer questions is to just look at a sensitivity analysis, because that really helps answer questions, what if, you know, what if something changes? So I already talked through the example, we'll go through it again, but right there is the example of what if you haven't estimated new growth correctly. So in this case, we had projected 68, turns out most likely going to be 51. So for every 1 million new growth, it's 17,000 more left, whichever way that goes. Happens to be, the state used to prorate the old general state aid. So if the state did prorate the new evidence-based funding model, that would be our next biggest figure. And you can see for each 1% of prorating, it could, would cost us 52,000, a little more than 52,000. Of course, the largest assumption, the most critical in the entire model is the CPI. We will adjust that based on the more current 10-year for the out-years. And for each 1%, it's 662,000. Now, that does get split over two years, but it still affects in its cumulative. Now, let's take a look at the, whoops, double sided. Just mentioned with the revenue, the original budget, the operating budget, is a key building block for the expenditures. As you can see on the chart here, that salaries account for 62% of the district's operating budget. So expenditures related to salaries are paramount within the projection. All salaries and benefits assumptions are based on actual staff contracts, and adjusted for known retirements, historical changes, and as determined by the Board of Education in collective bargaining. All staffing is held, been held flat, but will be updated as soon as the future staffing plans are developed. Oh, I just, no, sorry.
So the contract, I mean, when you add in salaries and benefits, it's 74% of the budget expenditures. The, what is the assumption in here on salaries past this year? That's included in this model?
Right. It's basically based on the CPI 2.1, then adjusted for all known retirees and et cetera. It's just a benchmark, it'll really determine that in negotiations, but.
The 3% increase you have for benefits?
For the second year.
Right, is that a historical figure?
Well, you know, health insurance, it's tough to predict. I mean, if you look at, you know, national trend, national trend is substantially above that. We have a little bit of a surplus in our self-help health. That's why we're starting out with a no increase for, no, our benefits also run on a calendar year. So for calendar year 19, we'd be saying no increase. But then for calendar year 20, we have built in there 3%. It's, you know, best estimate at this point.
What's the national average?
Uh, I don't know it off the top of my head, but I know it's a lot higher. I think it's between 7 and 10. What's that?
6.5.
I was just going to say 7%.
We, we've done a nice guide maintaining that, so we think at least in a couple of years out, we'd be at that 3%.
This could be one of those categories, Chris, at this point, of best case.
That's where average.
Right, and when we, we'll look at the sensitivity, health insurance is one of those, so you can see what that means. Uh, here is a graphical representation of the operating expenditures you were just asking. So for fiscal year 18, we're at 84.77, and projected to go up, based on these assumptions, to 95 million by 2023. This is a big. Sorry?
The big jump from 19 to 20, I think is what I referenced earlier, is a movement from the, of the capital projects, from Capital Projects Fund to O&amp;M.
Correct, so let me, let me just make sure, clarify on that. So within the operating funds, the operating funds are all funds of the district except, I'm sorry, I pronounced fund, F-U-N-D, not funds, fund, it's all of the fund, except for debt and capital projects. So the point is, why this little bit of, little extra bump here? So right now, we have about $5 million from prior referendums in the capital projects, restricted funds. Those funds are being used for capital improvements. When we switch from, going from there into our operating funds, and then build a sustainable model, that's where we're seeing the increase in expenditures as it comes from a restricted fund. Now, those expenditures will be made and accounted for in a non-restricted fund or operating fund. So that's why the extra bump there, so thank you for bringing that up. Okay. So based on staffing we discussed, and all the aforementioned salaries and benefit assumptions, the district is expecting salary benefits to reach about 68, 68.6 million. You can see here, we've got some retirements, and then kind of flattening out. So there's the estimated for salaries and benefits. This model predicts no legislative changes to the new evidence-based funding model or the PTAL property tax limitations. For known teacher retirements, we're budgeting that their replacements will be replaced with a master's on step-six teacher. Finally, we have predicted, we have provided a detailed expenditure assumptions, which is right here. So in addition to the assumptions that I've walked through with you, here's the 100-plus whatever. They're identified there year by year, has the historical changes based on actual, and then, of course, the budget and projections. We've also provided in your packets this reconciliation. And just want to clarify, this reconciliation is reconciling from the FY18 budget, not from the prior forecast, and not even from the fiscal year 17 actual. So our fiscal year 18 budget is reconciled and based on the FY17 actual. Now, this has moved forward one more year, and it's being based on FY18 budget, and we're reconciling. So I just want to walk through this quickly. So you can see that for all funds, we're looking at an increase from 18 budget to 19 projected of 3.8 million, or 3.78% of that, this is on revenue, of that over $1 million in education, capital projects. So now, when we go down here for the, flipping over to the, oh, I'm sorry. Looking at the, at the revenue increase of 3.1 million, 1.8 million is projected to be coming from taxes, 1.3 million coming, or 41% coming from the evidence-based funding. That's the two largest changes in our revenue. On the expenditure or on the backside, our single largest increase for fiscal year 19, as we've already discussed, would be to start to bring that capital from the restricted fund to the, to the operating funds or O&amp;M. That is 1.4 million, followed with this 36% of the increase, followed by salaries and benefits of just over a million or 26%. You can see the rest there on the reconciliation. Here is a graphical representation of the operating expenditures without transfers. Transfers are very minor, 172,000 transferring per law, the debt service lease needs to be paid from, or, I'm sorry, the computer lease needs to be paid from debt service, has to be transferred from operations or from ed. But this graphically displays the district's projected expenditures by major type. Based on all the aforementioned assumptions, the district expects its expenditures to be about 95 million by 2023. And we saw that on other graph, too. So here's what we talked about on the sensitivity. As you, as mentioned, salaries make 62% of the district's expenditures. So 1% change in salaries, we have an additional cost of about 530,000. As mentioned, as we began the discussion about what should we look for, for health insurance, 1% change in the district's health, dental, and life would be about 68,000. So if it turns out to be 4%, should have been the right number, we'd be 68,000 under, you know, so. All right, so if you can read this, you've passed your IHR test. But as you know, included in your packets, all assumptions are accumulated into individual fund pro formas, which are then finally aggregated into a final projection summary, here, which we're doing the operating funds. So that means debt service, even though it's in the packet, and the capital, it's in the packet. It's not rolled into this aggregate, so we can look at just operations. And all those details are in your, are in your packet. Going forward, we will have three scenarios. The other thing I want to note, as you go through these individual pro formas, also in the back there is a very detailed tax extension. That tax extension, the way the software works, it is, it's allocated based on the 2016 tax levy. Well, we know we're not going to have our 2017 levy allocated exactly as we had in the 16 levy. We're levying a little more into operations so we can pay back the ed fund, et cetera. Well, the only way to make those adjustments in the software is to actually make individual adjustments within each pro forma. I have made those adjustments so that they balance out and reflect correctly in each individual fund. But if you try to track back from that tax extension, you will notice it won't match up exactly. Two reasons, one, each tax levy is split between two fiscal years, and second, within each individual fund, they had to make a positive or negative adjustment, but those do balance. Probably the biggest one you might notice is if you look, as the district begins to rebuild its fund balance and to begin to eliminate its need for tax anticipation warrants, you will notice that we have an additional $1 million scheduled to be levied into working cash as the district begins to build its own working cash fund to eliminate the need for borrowing. This chart graphically displays the fund balance for all operating funds, the red line, plus the district's estimated cash low point, which is the purple line. The individual bars represent individual fund by years. For example, you can see the education fund. So I know it's a little confusing, but you read here for education, O&amp;M, transportation, IFRF, working cash, and then pork. As you can see here, the education fund is currently negative. We are working to bring this fund back to positive. And you can see that the higher O&amp;M has been, but now O&amp;M is coming out, too. You can see by this projections, and like I say, we'll update and have three different models going forward, but we're anticipating by 2023 that our fund balance would reach about 26 million. The current point we're at right now is at the, well, right now, we're at $526,000 in the hole. We're anticipating by the end. We're anticipating by the end of fiscal year '18, without the land sales, we would be at about, about $3 million positive. If you count in the land sales, we could be about 7 million, a little over $7 million positive by the end of '18.
You can stand now, either one. The purple line?
Yes.
Is basically a cash flow showing your low point. That's basically your, I'll call it the T A W line. If those, that shows you what you're projecting you'll have to borrow for T A Ws each year.
Right, right.
A little more than that for?
Exactly, because we authorize a little more just in case of delayed timing of payments from the state or something like that. So you can see here, fiscal year '18, 23.3 million negative. So you know, we're preparing, we will be at the October 19th meeting, discussing with the board for borrowing T A W, tax anticipation warrants, for 27 million to be prepared to cover that low point cycle. So the way the, the district collects its taxes, we collect our taxes only twice a year. So you think about it, like for your own household, if you got your salary in only twice a year, you could, you know, you have a low point, then a high point, then a low point, then a high point. Well, same is for the district. So we have our low point in November, then we'll have another high point, then we'll have another low point in May. And so in order to balance out these low and high points, we will need about 23 million, we'll authorize for 27, just to have that little bit of cushion in case the state delays payments or something like that. The, of course, draws for the T A Ws will only be taken as necessary on a monthly basis. Anything else on this slide? Okay, so this is just a recap of the operating fund balances going forward, starting with '18 through '23, just showing you the progress. Whoops, meant to point, see the progress we're making in all the funds. And the district is definitely headed in the right direction. This is an estimate of the estimated surpluses. Now, you'll notice, you know, '18, then up by '19, and back down on '20. Well, what, that's the moving the capital expenditures into ongoing operations. So the district needs to be able to fund that on an ongoing basis, and that's built in then going forward. So these projected surpluses are above the 3% policy set by the board. So we're, we're well within that.
Right, just to suggest a point forward. Can you put in that bar where the 3% would be?
Oh, certainly.
Just so we can see what the margin of error would be for each year.
And then finally, just to end here, so the operating, estimated operating fund balances, there, they are listed there graphically. And whoops, and with that, any additional questions?
Just one more thing to this last slide, just because this fund balance is important as well. Board set a policy, helping out 35, 36, something. Can you put as a bar next to these, what it would take to have 33%?
Yes.
Just so we can, again, illustrate visually the steepness of the hill or the progress being. It's a good graph, and this thing, it needs to be seen even when you're at the 26.3, you're still.
You just put a line to it.
Perfect, right. Well, can we, can we, whatever, however pretty you want to make it, just, you know.
We, we can belt that in there, maybe you'll notice that.
Nothing but suggestion.